We're going to call this meeting into order today. We are meeting about the Parent and Community Outreach Subcommittee. Deb, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Bailey. Mr. Harv.
Here.
Ms. Rodericks.
Here. I'll stand for the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its citizens, my nation under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. First item on the agenda is citizens' input. Deb, do we have anything today?
We do not.
Okay. We do want to take things just a little bit out of order today. So instead of starting with attendance, we'll start with the transition to Power School and Parents Square.
Sure. So we're at a very busy time right now with this transition. This is pretty much go time. In the next few months, it's going to become very busy. There's going to be a lot of data transferring from X2 to Power School. There are many meetings, there are many trainings. Right now, we're in the process of doing large systematic backups of X2 with Aspen, so that we have those backups that also are going to start to ingest into Power Schools. Mr. Michael Azic and his team are creating certain windows where they're going to do a full backup and then a full restore into Power Schools, so that everything is up to date for the 1st of July. That file is ginormous, because not only is it the current data, it's 20 years of data that they're backing up and snapshotting for us. So if I had to guess as far as size, I would say probably anywhere from 50 to 100 terabytes of information. So that's quite a bit of stuff. A big piece is, Power School does not do staff attendance, like we've talked about with the full committee. We meet, Mr. Coogan and I meet with Frontline on Thursday. We already purchased in the Frontline piece the accrual management software. We just never used it before, because we used X2. So we're actually going to be turning on those modules, and we just have to game plan. And Mr. Michael Azic, again, is going to have to take a backup of staff attendance and accruals out of X2. We're going to dump that into Power School, so it can be visible for HR, but also, it'll be in Frontline. So we're doing a training for staff. So now, as a staff member, if I want to take a day off, I request a day, but then I can also go in and I can see my accrual report. So that'll all be on that system. So we'll be rolling out training through HR in the coming weeks, within the next month, probably. Also, on the full committee coming up is Power School's version of the HR Resource Kit. We'll be rolling that out as well. The numbers will be for you guys to review at that meeting. That will allow every new hire to fill out all paperwork online, and then it'll automatically fill everything in for HR, Power School-related. It'll create a quicker workflow, it'll also allow us to be a little bit more efficient on the HR side. Special Programs Module, they began training last week, they started their initial training. We also do have another training coming up with the Special Programs Module coming up at the end of this month, and they'll be working with us throughout the whole process. Live IEP data, we did the initial data dump from X2 to a file. Power School now has that file, and they're working on ingesting that into their Special Programs Module. So there are still some things that are happening on that end. The Registration and Enrollment Module has been up and running. I know that Brian and Cindy, they've been working on some stuff. There were a couple of changes that they tweaked out. Power School was real receptive. They made those changes, everything has been running smooth, as far as I've been told.
Yeah.
I'm sure you can back that up as well. Brian said that he was impressed so far with the process. We are doing a bunch of training. So it's not just Special Programs, it's not just Nursing, it's not just the PACE area, it's everyone. So we're starting to grab in all of the stakeholders and doing training hearing there. Brian and Power School are working on a comprehensive training schedule for the rest of the summer. We anticipate using some of the professional development time at the end of the school year with the teachers and the admin, to get them a little bit of advanced training, and then throughout the summer. Also, which is very exciting for me, is we finally finished the search for a candidate for the SIMS Database Manager. We have an individual that we'll be bringing forward to the full committee. She brings just over 18 years' experience with Power School, so that'll be great for us. And she's also done a ton of training in the districts that she's worked in, so she's going to be a very great and added resource to Brian and his team, because not only can she assist him with the transition, she can do a lot of our training in-house. So we'll have someone that can train the trainers and be that much further ahead for us. Single sign-on, we've talked about that a bunch in the past, is set up, so now a teacher can use their Google account to log into Power School. There have been a few, not necessarily hiccups on our side, but with Power School, as far as single sign-on, we found a little bit of a security flaw, wherever you logged out, the browser still thought you were logged in. So that's an ongoing fix. However, that also affects some of the other products that all schools use. So we're very secure on our end, but they're looking at that, because they want to secure themselves up a little bit better as well. A big piece that we're looking at with Power School is ID cards. Right now, we print ID cards through X2, but Power School did not have a report built for that in their system. A lot of the districts that went to Power School started to use a third-party vendor for that. We're just too big. We have 10,000-plus students, you know, around 2,000 staff members. This new employee that we're going to be bringing on in the coming weeks actually wrote a script for that, so we're actually going to be able to use her script in Power School to work on the ID cards. We actually are going to be doing a print at the end of the summer, so that the ID cards will be in conjunction with the child's Chromebook. We're going to try to streamline a bunch of things altogether, and use this as the catalyst to get all that, you know, working together. We have requested guidance from Power School on nightly exports. So we have a bunch of other softwares in the district that require the information from the SIM system to populate all that information. School Messenger is one of them. We're going to be going to Parents Square, we'll talk about that in a few minutes. The nutrition software is another one. So Free and Reduced Lunch comes in from Power School, and it has to dump down into NutriKids. So we're working with them. The one thing that's been great with that is it's not something that we have to recreate anything, because a lot of the Power School districts have already created those reports. They have a group called the Power School Users Group of Massachusetts. So we've actually already joined it. Brian has been communicating with them, myself as well. So a lot of these districts will say, hey, we wrote that report, what you have to do is change this, and you guys can borrow it. So it's nice, because everybody is sharing information, trying to be a little bit helpful. There actually have been some things that we've done that some of the other districts have liked as well. One big piece is Brian's team was moved from the PACE building and the old music wing up to the new high school on the third floor. We needed a training area. He was kind of in between spaces at the auditorium building. So right now, Mr. Damaris at the high school has given us that space for the summer, and then we'll transition out of that, and then Brian will, you know, come back into the bigger area for technology that we're going to clean up a little bit this summer. So at least this way, there's parking, it's air conditioning, it's all new equipment up there, it's conducive to training, not where it was. On the Power School side, that's what I have for you guys today, if you have any questions.
Before Scott goes in, no. It sounds like things have gone much more smoothly.
Things are, yeah. I mean, when we initially took on this project, you know, Maria and I have told everyone, this is 20 years of data, and this is 20 years of comfort level with X2. So it's not only going to something new, it looks different, it feels different, it runs different, so there was a learning curve. Brian and his team are starting to get more comfortable with it. Again, that addition of the person that we're going to bring on that has Power School experience, I think is going to bring it all together. She came in the other day to meet with us, and she has some ideas that Brian loved. So it's going to be a good, I think it's going to be a good team. And moving forward, again, and I'll say it till I'm blue in the face, we are going to have hiccups, we're going to have roadblocks. You know, a project of this size, the biggest one, I think, that the school department has ever done, and been around for 20 years, it's been around for a long time, too. This is probably the biggest data implementation project we've ever done, and knock on wood so far, it's been minor things. It's been more of four of us sees it this way, we've done it this way, but we have to step back and look at it, because Power School tweaks it just a little bit differently. So right now, go-live date, July 1st, we're going to bring in the data that we need to be live, and then Brian and his team, throughout next year, again, we're going to run X2 in Power Schools. X2 is going to be used for state reporting, EPIM, state reporting in October, state reporting from this year, and then moving forward, next year, we're going to start reporting out from Power School at that point forward.
And the special education data issue was resolved. I'm only bringing that up just to reiterate the fact that we'll have two years of live data.
We have two years of live data. And again, so that's another piece. We'll use the PACE area for an example, the Registration and Enrollment Piece. They built the system, Cindy, her team, Brian, and our team, they saw some things they wanted to change, and we're more than likely going to do that in all areas of Power School. So as we move, it's going to be a very fluid kind of piece, because we're going to be changing things, we may see things that don't work, and we may change them altogether. But our data will be in July 1st, it's just going to look different for everybody.
Okay. I specifically wanted to bring that up, just knowing that that was a big concern for people. So I just want to reiterate that that was resolved, teachers are not going to have to input, you know, line by line, they'll have that two years of data, and anything before that.
Correct. And anything before that, historically, will be a PDF, but like we've talked about in the past, the IEP itself, and then all of the corresponding forms that go with the IEP, will all be one file. So if I had an IEP, I'd have like a 30-page historical document in the system that the teacher and/or administrator could bring up, parents could bring up, and review as necessary.
And then I know you said you had an update about Parents Square?
Yes.
Okay.
So Parents Square is going to replace our current School Messenger system. It is also going to, we're also going to send set a couple of pieces that the other buildings use. So we use School Messenger, some schools use Remind, some schools use Dojo. This software is just, it's phenomenal. I've been playing with it more and more. We had a very brief training for the principals at one of our last principals' meetings. We're going to start going live with this in the next month or so, and then as of July 1st, this will be the only platform we use. A couple of highlights, our backend data migration from SIMS System X2 to Parents Square has been complete. So now there's all live data in Parents Square that we can run tests, we could actually send messages now if we wanted to. We will, however, have to do that again before July 1st, because Power School will take over, so that information will then be dumped into Parents Square, all included in our original price. Parents Square actually let us come on a few months early with no charge to us, so that we could get comfortable with the system, because they knew we were going to have two brand-new systems in place. So that's coming up. We were once again able to use single sign-on for this system as well. So now it's going to be a little easier for the teachers to log into stuff. So before, we had an email password, we had a password for X2, we had a password for this. With single sign-on, teacher only has to remember one password now, and actually, they don't even have to. Screen comes up and it says, "Log in with your Google information," it'll show their Google account, fourofuschools.org, they click on it, they're in, secured. They'll be able to do that from home as well, it'll be available to them wherever they need it. We're going to start advertising this new system in the coming weeks. We have some marketing materials, some posters, some signs. We're toying with the idea of trying to run some type of contest, see what school can get most people signed up and ready to go ahead of time. There are two ways Parents Square works. One is just text, email, phone call, and then there's also the app. So if you have the app, everything goes through the app. The thing that's nice about the app is we can actually get away from sharing paper documents with families now. We'll be able to share acceptable use policy, sign-up sheets for field trips if we wanted to. Everything can be done on the phone, the parent can sign it, it gets sent back, it tracks everything. Parents Square will also allow us to do, we do trainings for the staff ethics every couple of years, we'll actually be able to do that all through Parents Square as well, we'll be able to get away from paper, and then it'll send a report to HR that everybody's complied with the trainings. So we're moving in the right direction. The one thing that I want to say about Parents Square that I think is what everyone was excited for on the central admin level and then at the buildings, is the translation piece. So if you have a home language at home of Spanish, the parent, the teacher or admin is going to send out an email, it's going to translate it automatically, but then, as a rebuttal from the parent, it's going to translate it back to the administrator in their language.
Okay.
So the two-way communication will be a lot smoother, and people will be able to understand what's going on. And then, the last piece is, we're going to start sending out videos to staff members, to families, we're going to work with Fred TV to produce some stuff, so that way people can see stuff over the summer, and we're very excited about it. The thing that's nice about Parents Square is, it's a heavy lift on the technology integration piece in the background, but for the end user, it's very simple to use. So it's all at the, you know, fingertips of an app. Now, if you have the app, you choose to use the app as your main piece, that's great. If you don't, it will still send out an all-call, it'll still send out a text, whatever the family's comfortable with.
Okay. Do we have any questions? Mr. Correll answered my questions about translation, and, you know, what parents were going to be seeing on their end.
He's just really calm. I think we have a lot of great work going on, and we're moving, a lot going on for just July 1st, obviously, you know, we'll revisit it when the time comes. I think it's just consistently getting updates on how things are going, because obviously, you know, with a lot of the work that we're aiming to do in the community, we just want to make sure that, you know, it's no secret that we might have to over-market things, and actually get them out, the amount of things that we're doing in the community. So I know we're going to have other meetings, but I would like to actually, like, you know, figure out ways to, and like I would say, I'll extend, and I can help figure out ways to really get this out with the amount of, you know, changes that we have.
That was the big reason why we put this on here, is because we don't want parents to feel like everything is changing all at the same time. We've got new buildings, we have new plans, we have new policies, you know, we're moving systems, and it can feel really overwhelming from a parent's side. So I think the more information that we can get out there, and the more often we can get it out there, I think the better.
We'll start to roll out the marketing materials in the coming weeks, and then we're going to work on some stuff. I think social media is going to be a big piece, too.
Yeah.
Because a lot of the parents see it there, so we'll start to produce some stuff, push it out via social media. And then we'll also use, I know this sounds crazy, but we're going to use School Messenger to promote our transition to Parents Square in the coming weeks.
Use the old system, to be like, we are no longer using this.
Correct.
Let's move on to the bigger and better stuff.
Having kids like that are, like, coming into certain schools, having parents, like, text to confirm, like, certain things, so, you know, a ton of different campaigns, but, yeah, no, it's all, it's all great stuff.
Thanks.
Yep, I appreciate that. Any other questions on Power School?
Good job, Scott. Thank you, sir.
I know, he was very thorough, so it was sort of like, okay, well, we have no other thanks.
Yeah, very good.
Good. All right, do we want to jump back up to attendance?
Sure. So we provided you all with a snapshot, sort of, where we were in March and where you are now. We have, average our daily attendance is 88.3%. Where our chronic rate is now, for all absences, 18 up is 28%, and our projected chronic rate is 44.7%. So when we ran all those numbers, we were really pleased to see that our chronic absenteeism rate has reduced by 8%, and we are on track, all goes well, to have a lower chronic absenteeism rate this year than we did last year.
Awesome.
I'm happy to answer any questions from the spreadsheet here.
Do we have any sense of, like, maybe what is contributing to that? So we have a better attendance rate, right? And so, it's not great, we know that, but what kinds of things do we think right now are maybe contributing that, that we can build on in the future?
So I would say, the attendance vehicles have been a great help. Usage as of today is 150 times since early January, I think, when we really launched it and expanded it. Our attendance offices are out there, but I think more than anything, the schools have really taken ownership of attendance, and of cultivating communities that students want to be in, and having those difficult conversations with families to figure out how do we make school more accessible, make it appealing, how do we get you to buy into your education? We, I've been working with a number of principals and families and having those kinds of conversations, and I think they're making a difference.
I look at these numbers, and, you know, Vivera's rate jumped. Spencer Borden, same thing, jumped in a good way. You know, Tansy jumped in a good way. You know, so, I mean, there's definitely a lot of mobility there, which has been positive. I just want to stress that, it's been a positive mobility. So when I say it's jumped, it's jumped in a good way. Are there initiatives that we can put in place, that we can be supportive of, to continue to make these improvements?
I think just continuing to beat the drum. You've got to be in school every day, all day, helping families navigate, you know, if a student is sick, when is it okay to send them? You know, having notes when necessary. I think it's really just about implementing the policies that we have, and having the message that your school is your partner. It's not an antagonistic relationship, you know, it's really, schools are trying to figure out how best to support all the children in our system, and we want to collaborate in that effort.
Other questions?
Just, you know, when the attendance is being taken, and, I don't know, maybe just this is hypothetical, but is there, and there's maybe one or two or several or handful of students that are chronically absent, is there, do they, like, is there, do you know the reason why that they're chronically absent? Is it because their parents aren't home, they're off to work, and they're, what's the?
I mean, I can't even say there's a trend, because there's so many reasons, right? So students are out for medical reasons.
Yep.
Extended absences, we have a number of students who are medically fragile, and they're out for an extended period of time. We do some, in some of our places, schools still have the fight with parents around vacation time is not an excused absence, so you shouldn't be taking your students on vacation in the middle of the school year.
Yep, right.
Particularly around the holidays, that was a big deal for us.
Right.
And then there are a host of other things. So there really isn't, like, one reason that we work through a myriad of issues.
And it's a very, very difficult project to take on, there's no doubt about it. I mean, and it really, it comes down to it, it just, it starts at home, and as much as we can help out at the home, I think that's good with the attendance officers and the other things that we have going. But it really does, it's got to be, you know, start at home, it has to be there. And, you know, I think majority of it, the parents are doing a good job, but there's some that just aren't keeping focused about it, so, but, good job, thank you for doing this.
So anecdotally, I have heard a lot of families talking about transportation as an issue. Like, I've heard families talking about, you know, their Uber didn't come on time, and that's why they couldn't get their kid out of school on time. So what should, if we're getting that, what would your recommendation be to go back and tell families to access that additional support? Because if families are relying on Ubers, like, we know that that's not sustainable, right, for kids to get to school, so where?
I would say, call the main office of your child's school, and share with either student support staff, let someone know that you're having issues with transportation. So if it's a one-off event, kid missed the bus, call the main office, you know, we can figure that out. If it's a more extensive issue, transportation, we know, is a huge budget item, right, for every district and for the city, but if we know what the issues are, if you don't have a car for a month, right, you know, your car's being fixed, or you're on a different work schedule and you can't bring your child in, like, bring those problems to the school committee, we can be creative about how we solve them.
And that's the reason why I bring that up, is that I want folks to hear, like, no, talk to your, talk to your child's school, we will problem-solve, we will try to come up with something, so that way no kid is missing school because an Uber didn't come on time.
Absolutely.
Right, we know that's not sustainable for people, it's expensive, you know, it's time-consuming. If you have multiple kids, you're probably not getting those multiple kids to school in one Uber trip. Likely, that's not happening. So that's the reason why publicly, I want to talk about, here's our plan, let's go back to our school, let's, again, partner with our folks.
Absolutely.
Anything else on attendance? I think that's it. I'm psyched that we have a jump.
Or a drop.
A drop, yeah. Jump in positive attendance, like, whatever. The words are going. All right, so we'll go back to item two, we were talking about the role of community facilitator. I know we wanted to look at just clarifying that role across the board.
So I can speak to that. We actually, after our budget hearings, as you know, we had 16 different versions of what that role was going to be. We heard from various principals, and some people very clear about what they wanted their community facilitator to do, and then, we just needed to have a common understanding of what the role was designed for, right? When we, we know the importance of increasing our parent engagement, and really creating that link between home and school. What we did was, we listened to the feedback from those meetings, from the committee, we actually called a principal's meeting and had everybody at the table, and we talked about that. And we started by saying, we heard 16 different messages, so let's brainstorm and talk together about what do we want this person to do, and how is this going to enhance what we already do in our schools? And we brainstormed, charted out what people wanted to. I think that the main thing is, people wanted them to be that conduit between school and home, and to help facilitate the interaction with parents and families, to involve our families. We talk about family engagement and family involvement. Having translation services is not enough. That's one piece of how we engage our families, because parents should get their information in their home language, but we need to really create opportunities to bring families into the school, so they can know their school, create that partnership, you know, participate in different opportunities, and in turn, that's going to impact their student's experience. So we took what principal said, we looked at the old job description, we looked to see what was already there, what needed to be revised, and what we've done is revise the job description based on what everybody's interaction was. We'll bring it back to the school committee on Monday, and looking for approval of the new description, so that everybody, there's a consistent message. We all know that one thing that we heard a lot of, oh, they're going to be making attendance calls. Well, they may be making attendance calls, but that's really, those attendance calls fall on everybody in the school, right, the whole team, right? But you, we might ask them to make attendance calls, especially if they speak a different language, and to connect with the families, but really, they are going to be that link between home and school, and really connecting with families, bringing families in, sitting at the table, creating workshop opportunities to engage families. All of that is part of really, because that job, we want one in every school, because we want our families to feel like they're part of the school. And this is not the answer to everything, but this is an attempt to close that gap between home and school, and to really start building those relationships. And that was the work that we, you know, we walked away with a common understanding of what that work needs to be done by each person.
I get really excited about this particular position, but...
Yeah. I just, I, you know, me, I just, we'll wait until Monday, I want to actually hear everything. I honestly think it's great, just simply, I mean, it's something new. You know, I think the community part, as we continue to say, is a very important piece of the work that we do. But, you know, if, no telling if it will work or it won't, but, you know, the reality is, we can actually get people out there and start getting people engaged in doing things. Just try to do the work and get it done.
And go into families, so go into the home, working with families, you know, hooking parents up, putting families with partnerships within the community, all that work needs to be done, and there needs to be an individual that they can go to, that is going to be able to guide them and support them in whatever it is that they're doing. So I think that there's a lot of potential for that, I agree with you, we don't know if it's going to work, but we have to do something, because we know that we, we're one piece of the puzzle.
Yeah.
We can't do anything without the partnership between home and school.
Absolutely.
With that, I know that we've had a few of those positions already in some of the schools, how has that gone?
Well, I will say that we've had some, we have a few, limited few, that work through our L department, and they attend the LPAC meeting, they do calls to families, they attend some meetings with parents, et cetera. I think we need to expand on that, and we need to look at what that work is, and how do we grow that work, so that there's more consistency across the board in all schools.
And we have two in specialized as well.
Yes.
So they'll translate documents, they'll translate to meetings, that kind of thing, help with the CPAP.
Yeah, I think, I think it's amazing, just starting on different avenues. I think it's long overdue, to be completely honest, so...
That's right.
You know how I feel about that piece, right?
Yeah.
So we're not going to get anywhere unless we have a home-school-community partnership, right? Like, school's one part of it, we've got to get all parts on board, so I'm happy that that's moving forward. Do we have any other questions on that role? All right. All right. Then I know we were going to talk about the event that is scheduled for May 21st.
So as you know, May is Mental Health Week this month.
That is why I'm wearing my Mental Health is Health t-shirt today because it's Mental Health Week.
So we wanted to really invite our families in with that, with the ultimate theme of being a healthier you, whatever that means for, you know, each individual may, may look different. So really show those options of, you know, different ways to be healthy. You know, with, including some workshops that will educate our families and students on being healthier. Fun activities, we're inviting our community partners in to set up tables that are interactive around what their agency does that will promote a healthier you. So we're very excited about that. It's going to be May 21st, Saturday, from 10 to 12 at Darfey High School.
Do families need to register beforehand?
They don't.
Okay.
So we really just wanted to have that open invitation so that families don't feel like they didn't have a chance to register or if their Saturday plans that they had initially, you know, ended, they, they were still welcome to come.
How many community providers do we have so far?
So we looked at that today. I think we have seven or eight that have already signed up. So, you know, we've been pushing out just some reminders. I have bumped into a few, there's a couple of different activities in the city on the same day. So, different times, so hoping that, you know, they will still come to ours and then transition over to the next ones.
What else is going on in the city on the 21st?
There's the block party at CD Row.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry.
That's why.
Okay.
Where's this going to be at Darfey?
So it's going to depend on how many participants we have, where we set up. We have reserved the whole first floor of Darfey, including the, the gym, so the field towns. So we also reserved the courtyard outside so if the weather is nice, so it's, you know, it's going to, we're going to make those calls once we have our final numbers and really look at what, you know, what space, weather permitting, will be the best to serve.
I have a wild idea. So what time is the block party?
At 12. 12 to 3.
So at one point, this is pre-COVID, there were two events going on. One was a disability fair and one was some community event, right? And what we ended up doing was we actually asked the city to use the trolleys to shuttle people from one event to the other event. I'm just putting it out there publicly that that might be a fantastic way to get folks, you know, kind of moving throughout the city and also seeing that there are multiple partners that are able to collaborate. I don't remember what the second event was, but there was the disability fair event that was happening at CUS. And then there was another event that was happening locally that was targeting youth and families. And so one, you know, they were overlapping a little bit and they were able to get the, the trolleys to just have a shuttle every half an hour to go from one event to the next.
You need to get people there.
You need to get people there. Especially knowing that transportation is an issue in the city, especially down in the Rock Street area. That can be really challenging to park down there. It might be a nice way, you know, people can back and forth, people can leave their cars. So just putting that out into, out into the community, probably. Just a thought. Start in trouble. Does anyone have? Anyone have questions? Do we have other mental health initiatives that we're hoping to promote and push for our kids, for our families?
So we've been, we've been having the Welcome to K events, which we also bring in family, uh, community partners into those. We've had two so far. The next three are currently being scheduled throughout the city. Some will be at the parks, once it's weather permitting, we continue.
Someday we'll have good weather.
Yeah.
About, okay.
Yep, so we had Mark bullying, cyberbullying presentation at CUS last week. We have another tomorrow, virtually. A reminder to all parents with the link will be sent out tomorrow.
And families do need to register for that event?
They do. Well, actually, we're sending out the link now, so. Mark was so gracious to just initially, we would need to register, but now they were gracious to just let us send the link to all of our families. So every family will, will be sent the link to their email. That's tomorrow at 6:00 PM, so we're excited about that.
For families that don't know what MARK is, can we just describe briefly what that would entail?
Yep. It's, uh, MARK is the Massachusetts Aggression Reduction Center. And it is run by Dr. Englander out of Bridgewater State College. And they've, they've really invested many resources into creating bullying curriculum that's used throughout our schools.
It's a program that we have been using for years in public schools. We've been trained in MARK for, at minimum, five, seven years now. Dr. Englander has come to our school to train. The school adjustment counselors and guidance counselors on the curriculum. It's a train-the-trainer model. It's a curriculum that is free for all, all to, to access as well, too. They've also, pre-COVID, they would send, they would send presenters to the classroom to also do classroom presentations to students on, on bullying and how to support one another, how students, what students can do as well, too.
I just know that that's obviously a, a big concern for a lot of families right now and that's kind of at the forefront of a lot of conversations. And so, you know, I always go back to, we aren't going to be able to tackle this until we have all of the players at the table or unless we have all the players at the table, right? That's our kids, that's our families, that's our staff. And so if we've got an event like that and want to, you know, is there anything that we can do to help promote and push that to encourage families to attend?
Well, I think just what you said, encouraging families, it's so important to be a part of that and really listen to what MARK has, has the message that they have and that's research-based. So that's critical in, in, you know, helping our students succeed in school.
They're evidence-based, they are a neutral party. You know, it's someone other than just the schools talking to our kids about it. But if there's something that we can do to help promote some of those things, definitely let us know. I can't think that any of us wouldn't be willing to push that. Any other cool events happening? I think that's all of them for now.
Um, we are, we are, our SEL curriculum of True Love, we're in the Compassionate Action right now. So I'm curious, we're going to be doing a lot of work with schools to figure out what are they doing to roll out Compassionate Action. And we'll be celebrating each student from each school where they, we will ask each school to nominate one student per school who has exemplified compassion in action as well, too, and celebrating the students.
I love it. We have any other questions on the mental health component? All right, then. Is there any new business? I do want to make one statement, so this begins, I'm going to say it regardless. So this begins Teacher Appreciation Week. So I just feel the need to publicly put that out there, that our teachers work hard every single day and that, yes, this is one week dedicated to appreciating the work they do. You know, but the reality is that they've been working hard all year long.
If I could just add, in public schools, we celebrate Staff Appreciation Week.
Okay.
Because we put, whether you're custodial, nutrition, teacher, administrator, we, we know that they're all valuable and all piece of the puzzle, so we celebrate staff appreciation.
I was going off the more national piece. I actually appreciate that more because it's not just our teachers that have an impact on our kids. It is quite literally everybody that is in the building. And to tell you that for my girl, it's, you know, the school secretary is the person that is, she's right there with her, you know, and, actually, my girl has connections all over the building, but it's the school secretary, it's the adjustment counselor. You know, it's everybody, so it's not just our teachers, so I appreciate that. That was my only new business and I felt the need to put that out there. Do we have anything else? All right, then we have to chain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
All in favor? Any way to close? Go vote in, adjourn.